All right, well, welcome, everyone. We will call this meeting to order, this joint session, as you can see, for our airport, between the cities of Guthrie and Edmond. I don't know how this works exactly with a joint. Do you have to say the same thing?
Well, I have to call it. It's I have to call it so there's some. We're calling it what we have for them. We can proceed.
Okay.
So now it's up to you because you're in your backyard, therefore you get to run the show.
Well, like we're co-hosting a podcast.
We need to do that.
I don't know. It'd be fun. We need some people there. Okay. Well, then, yes, again, officially, I will call this meeting to order, and we have a board on our side. I will introduce our council, our men and staff. Starting down the line and working our way over, we have Councilwoman Nethy Gibbs. Right here, we have Councilman Brian Bockroyd. We have Councilman Tracy Williams. Well, on the council, we have Councilman Grant Adair. And then, working our way back around, we're like staff, we have, we're letting me do that anyway. Okay. Again, right here, in between us, we have Kim Biggs, our treasurer, and our clerk. And then, right here, we have William Weaver, our city attorney.
All right. Let me introduce.
Oh, sorry. Well, I was going to do it in the last, I was using a talk. And then it really went. But I will say, I will say, this is Andy Fong, our city manager. Yeah, it's a moral. So wait till we all add it up and then swing it over to him as he spoke, but okay.
All right.
Yeah. And then, obviously, I am Adam Rock, the mayor.
So, it's exciting, I think, to be here and actually have a joint meeting to talk about the airport. So with us today, we have, to my left is Councilman from Ward Four, Phil Frame, and from Ward Three, Preston Waterson. And Councilman Barry Moore is out of town, or he's supposed to be out of town. And Councilman Maggie Hurdock Nichols had another meeting that she couldn't get out of today. Staff lives. I'll go ahead and introduce Randy Hands, our inner-city manager, first.
I have the opposite first.
I believe in making sure that the important people.
No.
We also have our city clerk, Gloria Asher Toley. I did see somewhere, I saw Kathy, are you back there?
She's waiting.
Nathi Mattis, our director of finance. We've got a few other staff people in back there, too. Casey Moore, Madison, Katie. Y'all just raise your hands, everybody, as if you are. Did you introduce your board members?
No, it's already done.
Okay. You want to introduce your board members first?
Yes. Two of our council members are also on the board. We have Grant Adair right here, which should all of you know. Tracy Williams as well. We also have Ryan Wallace, I think, over here, and yeah, like someone right there. And then, not with us is Ryan Husky, who will be at the lake today. I also have staff as well. We have Sean Veruni, I can't see Sean Veruni. Our economic development director. We have Justin Fortney, our tourism director. And then, we have Dan Casey, that heads up our planning department. And then, we also... Oh, gosh. I'm going to get to a little man in three minutes before we start. Our police chief, chief swagger. We also have our fire chief, Dave Lawson. Anybody remember his name?
Nope.
That's everyone. And then, last but not least, the most important person today for us is Kaden Young, our airport director.
Did you name the two board members from the staff? I got bad introduction. Oh, okay. So, and so that meant on the airport board is Sam, Sam's back at the back, Walt Strong or Wall? I thought he was your colleague, there's Walt. And then, Dick, yeah, Dick sitting on the back row.
No. Were you missing anybody? I'll throw Aaron Rybar in there, who runs our video department.
We're assuming Paulson as well. Okay. Have you missed anybody? Okay.
All right, we're good. All right, we move to item number two. And we actually, we just did item number three, the presentation and discussion of the partnership between the city of Guthrie and the city of Edmond in the management and development of the Guthrie-Edmond Regional Airport, including the roles and commitments outlined in the Joint Airport Operating Agreement effective through June 30th, 2044. Kaden Young, airport director.
Good morning, mayor and councils. Not every day you get to say that in a plural sense, but we're excited to welcome you to our facility, this facility, and burning technology center, but also our airport facility later today. I also want to thank Scott and his team at Aberdeen and Tech for allowing us to utilize this space this morning. I'm going to give an overview of the airport and its operations, and then we will hear from two more speakers. My goal today is to get us adjourned by 10:45 so that we can head over to hangar number two. This will give everyone time to settle in, and we'll have a ribbon heading of Edmond from 11:00 to 11:15. After that, it's interesting, but there will also be flights available as well. They'll depart the airport after the event. They'll depart the airport, swing over by Arcadia Lake and come back, just so they can get that pilot experience, that visitors that come in and visit both communities every day. Won't focus too much on history today, I know it's just a little after 9:00 AM. The airport began as an emergency airmail route strip. In fact, we saw the concrete arrow on site that points towards Stillwater, operated as the Guthrie-Missouri Airport from the mid-1940s until the joint partnership with them in the late June 2nd. This photo, really, I just wanted to highlight, is from the '70s, features Guthrie Mayor Art Nelson, the city manager and FA representative. The gentleman on the far right is the airport manager at the time, Sam Stock Nelson. I'm still aspiring to be as cool as he was. I'll get there one day. Also, I want to talk about the partnership between both cities, of course. In 2004, both cities recognized the necessity and value of having an airport right in their backyard. We did something rare. We created a partnership that, please don't correct me if I'm wrong, but a partnership like ours doesn't exist anywhere else in the state. Probably a few examples can be found anywhere in the United States. This is a very special partnership with the airport, and I think that speaks to the airport's importance as well. We formed the airport board, it was renamed the Guthrie-Edmond Regional Airport. Since then, we've been able to accomplish a runway expansion, corporate banner development, apron expansion, and taxiway developments together. All of these projects have built the airport into the regional driver economic road that it is today. I'm going to throw a lot of information at you, just to give you a large overview of the airport. We have over 60 hangar spaces, which contributes to our large amount of base aircraft. In 2023, the state airport organization compiled base aircraft data on our airport, and we have consistently been ranked in the top five in terms of the number of aircraft. That is a lot of pilots that are choosing to base their aircraft right in our community. We're a popular option. We're right outside the OKC metro with easy access I-35, and we're positioned right outside of what can be a congested, clashy airspace. Earlier this year, we implemented a tracking software that provides this data so that we can make more informed decisions about who our visitors are and what amenities we can be expected to provide. We're still estimating that we'll have a little more than 20,000 operations in 2025. I'll talk about the taxiway project later. That is going to provide some impacts to those estimates, but we had no idea exactly what level of traffic we were experiencing at the airport until we began tracking it step. In 2017, Director Ardis of his team at the ODAA embarked on an ambitious project, I won't get too much into the weeds, if you may, I want to tell you, but they performed an in-depth economic analysis study that found that our airport contributes $19.2 million in economic activity. They just conducted a 2025 study, we'll see the results of that later this year, but that was significant for an airport our size. And that study also found that aviation and aerospace is the second largest industry in the state. And so, we play an important role for that here in central Oklahoma. I did put together these photos to demonstrate just how many different operations and businesses are active in the single day of the airport. Zipco Aeronautics, an aircraft composite parts manufacturer, has produced multiple Zipco Edge aircraft right here in Guthrie. They're also the airport's largest employer, with staff a little over 30. We regularly see touchable operations from the T6s from Durant. We also have medical transport services and jet shelters. We're a very busy airport. Another point of pride is the amount of pilots that earn their certifications here. A handful of pilots are taking advantage of the multiple flight schools located at the airport, earning their certifications to go on to be professional pilots or just pick up a new hobby. I would be remiss if I also didn't mention the jobs at the airport. We have line service professionals, aircraft maintenance, pipeline control. I already mentioned Zipco employees, cloud employees, flight instructors. There's all kinds of different business activities going on, and all of that's contributing to the $19.2 million. I also did want to take a moment real quick and grab our new FBO. FBO stands for fixed base operator. It's kind of like the airport's gas station, so to speak, but they provide other essential aircraft services. For 50 years, we had the same FBO out of the airport. Visitors were regularly getting the same experience for 50 years, and for an airport like ours with a single FBO, that's a huge partnership for our airport to undertake. In 2023, our FBO operator retired, and that was 50 years of, well, institutional knowledge at the airport that left. We have a new FBO now, her name is Apex Aero Center. We'll tour their facilities later today at the airport. They came in and renovated a lot of it, but professional, have a professional upload, professional hire every day, and their contacts have brought a lot of increases in fuel sales. In the first year of operations, they doubled fuel sales as compared to the previous FBO. In 2023, for example, jet fuel used in jet engines made up 34% of our fuel flow revenue. This, that was the old FBO. In 2024, when Apex started, jet fuel made up 43%. So far this year, jet fuel has consisted of 53% of our operations. And that's not because the other types of fuel are not being sold as much, they're selling they're more a double fuel. There's an increase in that much jet track, and so we're seeing a lot more jet traffic at the airport, and we're glad to have them as a community partner in that way. Didn't want to do a breakdown of base aircraft. Both Guthrie and Edmond derive enormous use from the airport. Nearly 62% of our base aircraft are long-term tenants, have an Edmond address. Nearly 20% have a Guthrie address, and the rest are split evenly between the Logan and Oklahoma County areas. The big questions I often get are, where are these visitors going after their arrival? The most significant increases in traffic are aligned with the schedule at the lazy arena, actually. In fact, if you're able to check the lazy D's schedule and then you overlap our schedule at busiest times, they probably would align perfectly on top of each other. But we also have numerous businesses that utilize the airport for their operations, such as United Turf and Track, and Midly Mechanical, and Diversified Construction. A lot of these larger companies based in both Guthrie and Edmond rely on the airport to do their everyday business. These visitors, in turn, are generating sales tax revenue. They're staying nearby hotels. They're hopefully purchasing fuel from their plane at the airport. It's critical that we attract these kinds of visitors so that when they are seeking a less congested airport outside of OKC, Guthrie-Edmond Airport comes to mind as the option they own. There are two primary revenue sources from the airport, such as ours. The first is hangar ground lease revenue. So we, as the city, own all of the property, and how it typically works is a private developer will come in and construct a hangar, and in return for that, we get hangar ground lease revenue. That accounts for 46% of our revenue, just about. The other form of revenue primarily at our airport is fuel flow speed revenue. And so, whenever I said earlier about visitors stopping in and buying gas, we, as a city, are collecting a portion of that. And I did want to mention that whenever we are collecting these revenues, our goal is, as at every airport, is self-sustaining revenue. Right now, we kind of have a long ways to go to get there. For about two, three months a year, we actually produce enough revenue to cover all of our expenses, and so we don't have to build Irish City. For the rest of the year, we are. And so, our goal is to get that slowly up to six months, and then finally get to the point where, when my office is coming to Guthrie Council or Edmond Council, I'm only asking for a local match to support large-scale projects that we probably couldn't fund on our own, but the goal of self-sustaining revenue.
Kaden, that's a great point. I want to jump in there. So, talking about the operating cost of the airport and the airline connectivity, give us, just for a minute, give us a quick glimpse of what that looks like. Maybe your next slide, so I'm ahead of you on some...
Historically, the allotments for the airport from both cities have been 150,000 to 200,000. I think this last year, it's going to be 300,000 each, solely because we're pursuing a lot of capital projects. But we turned that $150,000 per city into a $19.2 million in annual economic activity. So, this relatively small amount is driving a lot of benefit and results that are proven at the airport. Later on, actually, the next slide, I am going to talk about the grant proportions, and you'll really see how a small amount of dollars can make, we can make a lot more down at the airport. The FAA, I put that in red, provides 90% to 95% of our federal funding. So this bar graph here, this is to illustrate, whenever we go after, like, a new terminal or a new taxiway or putting in a new road, what that funding structure typically looks like. Very rare are you going to be able to consistently get a 90% to 95% coverage from the federal government. Bracy's office at the ODAA, they typically will match the city by 5%. I put them here in yellow. And so, by the time it gets to the local match, first, come out these projects, I put Guthrie in green and Edmond in blue, that is the cost share that we typically see. And just to provide some examples of what this actually translates into, right now, we're removing and replacing 3,000 feet of taxiway and installing LED lights. That project's total cost is $5.7 million, large enough. Each city is only providing $142,000 for that project. So in return for $142,000 from both cities, we're getting a $5.7 million infrastructure upgrade. So that's huge. Another example is our fencing project. We're installing over 8,000 meter feet of fence, fencing the entire east side of the airport. The total project cost for that, excuse me, was $400,000, and the total cost per city is $10,700. So for a completely new fence on the east side, we're spending a little less than $11,000. And we couldn't buy a commercial-grade mower at the airport for that cost. We're getting an entire new fence. And so, this is just the real story. What we can do, whenever we put money towards the airport, will give a very, very substantial return on investment, and we're getting a heck of a deal from our federal and state partners. Before I wrap up, I also wanted to review some of the events that happen at the airport each year. Unfortunately, we couldn't host this event this year. It typically occurs in this month. This is our annual fly-in and community day. We typically will show off and display aircraft, bring all kinds of vendors, kids' activities. The EAA will actually provide free flights for this event. We are looking forward to expanding this event, offering new activities. We hosted this at Edmond a few months ago. We want the community of both Guthrie and Edmond to be utilized at this airport and get to come out to these events and see what their community has to learn. Also want to talk about the Center of Flight Camp. We hosted that since 2017. We typically host 20, 25 kids in the community, ages eight to 12. These kids typically come from disadvantaged backgrounds, they're not going to experience aviation and aerospace otherwise that participate. We've had great success with this program. This program is also funded in partnership with the ODAA, and so they have consistently helped with aviation education, and that's a huge thing. I spoke earlier about the pilots continually earning our certifications at our airport. That's something that we're investing in when they're young, so we can keep general aviation alive, keep aircraft mechanics, air traffic control, pilots, airport managers, all the way. Get those kids engaged. Finally, to wrap up, Sam Flyin, hosted in December, was a special event as well. We do not have a solid date yet for this year, but we typically have Sam, who fly into the airport, and a bunch of kids will come up to see him and all take photos. Super fun event happening later this year. We hope you can join us. And then, I will, to conclude here, I was going to have the both mayors to move to the next section. We're going to switch up some of the PowerPoint slides, and we can come right back, and I'll introduce to the secretary.
Okay. I have a question, I think.
Absolutely.
You say that the aeronautics is the second most popular industry in Oklahoma, or second largest? Yeah. What is that based on? I mean, that's amazing.
What is that?
Yeah, what is the, what is, we say that it's the second largest industry in Oklahoma. What is that based on, make it the largest, second largest?
I think the state director probably would be more able to answer that. They were a department that they spent probably over a year working on that study happened in 2006.
All right. I'll get that answer in the next round, everybody. So, do you want me to go ahead and move on to item number four?
Yeah, if there aren't any more, if there aren't any questions.
Anybody? Okay. All right. Item number four, a presentation and discussion of the Guthrie-Edmond Regional Airport's impact on regional and state growth within the Oklahoma airport system. Do you know our beer as well, or is that...
Yeah.
I'm not sure how the legal proceeding out has to go.
Nice to meet you, Jack.
Yes. And forgive me if I'm not too many wrong, is it Bracy Ardis? All right. Excellent. Executive Director of the Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Air Space.
I'll introduce him there.
Oh, okay. You're good. I have him on the bottom of the...
Our next speaker is the executive director of the Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Aeronautics since November 2020, and CEO of the Oklahoma Space Industrial Development and Forty since July 2025. He's busy guy. Director Ardis has worked for the ODAA since 2009. He graduated from the University of Oklahoma, I won't hold it against him, with a degree in aviation management with double minors in business and air traffic control. He also has a commercial pilot's license with single multi-engine instrument degrees, and also certified flight truck. So we've got to welcome Director Ardis.
Good morning, everybody, and I guess I'm on camera, so I can't walk, right? That wouldn't be easy for you to do. I'm a walker and talker, so I'd rather just take the microphone out and walk around. I'll try and set foot for a quick minute here. But, good to see everybody. Glad to have this meeting convene. I know we've talked about this, Kaden, and Eddie, and Eddie's predecessor, for years, it seemed like. How can we get the two governing bodies of Edmond and Guthrie together? And I guess the most important information of the day is, here in about two and a half weeks, I'll be joining the citizenry of the great city of Edmond. So, be joining early, it's kind of October 1st. So anyway, excited to be moving to Edmond, but moving back to my group in my younger years. But aviation aerospace, and I might be a little bit biased, is probably the most exciting thing happening here in the great state of Oklahoma. We have a lot of interesting activities, a great diverse set of activities happening within this industry, and Mr. Mayor, I'll do my best to answer your question of why is this, how is this, where is this second-largest industry within our segment? So we're doing a little history, a little background. We're going to cut my two-hour speech down here to get it out of here by 10:45. This was some of the early guys in 1906. Unfortunately, this one didn't make it. I thought you were showing the story of the airplane, whether or not that was a good or a bad thing. I don't know if that airplane would have been on the next flight. But in 1910, we did. We achieved first flight in Oklahoma in 1910. Charles Willard, first plane, first plane to fly on the air to Oklahoma, flew 50 feet altitude for three-quarters of a mile. That may include a torn goodbye. Pretty eager to go, well, that's, that's just approach the park, that's even not that exciting. Think about how far we've come, from that time period to the '60s. We went from seconds of flight, hundreds of feet of flight, to maybe to the moon in three days. To a transformation of how fast aviation grew. And I want us to think about how fast aviation grew because Guthrie-Edmond Regional Airport took on a very similar trajectory for about two decades, from the early 2000s to today. So Clyde Sessner, I know we have some economic development chamber professionals in the world, we did great in economic development here in Oklahoma. Unfortunately, this is one that we lost. Clyde Sessner did his testing up there in northwest Oklahoma, great soft planes. Fortunately, we know, if anybody knows about Sessner Aircraft, they ended up going to Bushfield Kingdoms, where their manufacturing happens currently. What really gave the R-AH aerospace industry the boost and the boom that it is is oil and gas. Oil and gas, and the folks, the grandfathers, the forefathers of oil and gas, said, how can we get out to the oil fields to repair our equipment? How can we get our experts out to the oil fields to figure out where to drill? How can we get to the bank first and lease that piece of property for new development? Aircraft is the fastest way. Anybody know about surface transportation back in the '20s and '30s? Knew that surface transportation wasn't great, so they fly airplanes in, land on a county road, land in the middle of the field, and be able to do their operation. Of course, Philip's Petroleum, Frank Phillips, early days, helped spur on some of that by funding various air races across the country, across the world. We know about the movie May, by the coach, set sites on around the world in eight days. Why the Post was also one of Frank Phillips and the forefathers of oil and gas, one of their first aviator, first pilots. Business aviation was born right here in Oklahoma because of the oil and gas industry. We obviously know Will and Wiley had a great close connection, two great statesmen for Oklahoma, which we know their demise was hit when they flew on that fateful flight in Alaska. And that was going to show you that aviation, aviation was learned, we were experienced with true blood, sweat, and tears back in the day. Today, it's a much safer form of flying, safest form of transportation out there. Wasn't always that way. We've learned a lot from the folks that came to us. Now, we go to the '40s, and this is where we really catapulted. This is what was the foundation, Mr. Mayor, of aviation aerospace. World War II really is what caused and created R-AH aerospace. Yes, there was industry happening beforehand. Yes, there were airports out there. There was air transportation, there was air management, there was commercial presence, there was business aviation happening. But World War II is really what set the foundation for our success, particularly when a little place called Teeter Air Force Base, then the Midwest Air Depot, was created. That's what started the aviation aerospace, where it's on the prowl. Largest industrial player today, 1943, as World War II started really ginning up, a lot more airports at that time, or airports today, harking their history back to World War II. Let's go to E and K and J, line up, World War II, Stillwater, or Edmond. There's probably two dozen-plus airports in operation today that were former military bases in World War II. And that's not all of them. There were plenty that closed that are not operational today. Just after World War II, as the men and women were coming back from the warfighting efforts, our agency was created. How can we transition these skills that these men and women have created and achieved in wartime? How can we transition them into a civilian in a commercial world and take advantage of that? So we lost Sessner, bad economic development deal. We had two great economic development deals in 1946. American Airlines Maintenance Base, largest commercial maintenance operation facility in the world, moved from LaGuardia in New York, also Oklahoma. Five, six thousand employees today, largest civilian MRO facility, to match with large militaries MRO facility in Teeter Air Force Base. 1946, the Civil Aeronautics Administration, this was the predecessor to the FAA, as we know it today, had their standardization center in Houston, Texas, moved to Oklahoma City. They were named FAA, Mike Penroney, or not the Senator, after Senator Penroney, who crafted the FAA bill after some of those fateful flights across the Great Canyon. You know the aviation history, you know how the federal aviation administration is created. Anytime we can steal something from the state of New York, the state of Texas, we did that. 1946 was a great year for state Oklahoma. I won't belabor this because you've seen the timeline slide, but this was some great neat pictures from that era of aviation. I won't belabor this because you've seen the timeline slide, but this is some great neat pictures from that era of aviation. American Airlines Maintenance Base, that hangar is still safe. It looks a little bit different. So now here we are today. We are in a renaissance of aviation aerospace across the state of Oklahoma. And I won't go through all of these, we're just bullet points, just items along the timeline, continuum of continued success that our legislature has been able to bestow upon our agency and other agencies across the state of Oklahoma to support aviation aerospace throughout our great state. It's our second largest industry, $44 million a year annual economic activity, 206,000 total jobs, about 140,000 loans or direct jobs employed directly in the industry, 1,100 different companies. Engineering, MRO is our bread and butter, MRO being maintenance and current overall. That's what we do best in state of Oklahoma. We keep airplanes flying. We're not flashy, fancy, and sexy like Boeing in Seattle, or Boeing in South Carolina, or Airbus in Alabama, or the general aviation, business aviation manufacturers in Wichita. We don't build new things in Oklahoma in terms of new fully manufactured planes. We keep airplanes flying. That's a great spot to be, because when the coun- when the economy of the country goes down, when we have this roller coaster ride that we're on from time to time of our economy or our country, you can choose not to buy a new airplane. Commercial airliners choose that corporate flight program, choose that. Personal individuals choose not to buy new airplanes because the economy may not be doing well. But you don't have the choice not to not maintain your airplane. It's not like a car, where you can say, well, the budget's, the budget hurts a little bit, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna delay that oil change another thousand miles and try and ride out of it. Or that, seeing some, some rubber on those tires, I'm just gonna train another 5,000 miles out of those tires. You can't do that in aviation. You have a dedicated timeline that you must maintain your airplane on. And so that's why when, in 2008, we had the greater recession, Wichita had to lay off 30, 40,000 people, Oklahoma did just fine in our aviation aerospace industry. There's people still have to maintain airplanes, and we have a great balance between public and private sector industries in aviation aerospace. Generates, just the airport, so we look at three different segments. This is kind of where you may start seeing how we're able to form like this $44 million a year in second largest industry for state of Oklahoma. People always saw, well, you have military aviation over here, you have commercial and general aviation over here, and you have this aviation industrial complex that supports both kind of in the middle. Everybody looking at it individually, it's all aviation aerospace. It's all in the same industry. It's all one together industry. And so we put all that together, all three of those buckets, so to speak, aviation aerospace industry. That is how we got to the second largest industry. The airport bucket, the commercial and general aviation airport bucket, we wouldn't look at the tax code, the tax revenues. Well, it's half a billion dollars in tax revenues. They come back to the state of Oklahoma, both to the state coppers and to local coppers based on this. And the split's about 65, 35 percent wise in terms of what comes back in state and what comes back to localities. Just a couple of statistics there, anyone given time, there's, there were 60,000 people up in the air across our United States. You've seen, I encourage you, go, go home, look at YouTube, see the, the day in the life of an aircraft controller, and see all the flights crisscrossing our country. Uh, it's about a 30 second video, they speed up a day, a 30 second, flew a pretty deep. So we're directly funded by users of the system up until about 2022, about four years ago. We were directly funded by users of the system. Then the legislature said, you know what, we want to double down on this aviation aerospace thing. We want to, how can we help support aviation aerospace at a click that we've never seen before? They started giving us general revenue funds at the 2021 session, FY22. Uh, we had our first general appropriation of $2 million. And that is created a foundation for your, we'll be specific, we'll talk about that here in a minute. The four main categories that we're focused on as an agency, airports, aerospace industry, workforce development, aviation safety, integrating these new technologies. And of course, you've heard Kaden, uh, Kaden say that, uh, as of July 1st, we now have the spaceport in our agency. We operate the spaceport in Washington, Oklahoma, and picture all the space industries attended to across the state. I don't have a couple of airports like the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. You guys are known as a national business airport, one of only a few across the state. This is your classification, your category, the top category of airport. You guys are a great airport. Here's some specifics, and Kaden mentioned this, $19.2 million in total at any economic activity, and then this is 2017. And we are currently going through a new study right now, we'll have those numbers released by the end of the year, early 2026. This is just a snapshot of the IFR, that's instrument flight rules, that's when you, uh, uh, it's cloudy outside, you can't see where you're going, around instrument flight plan. This is where you guys have been able to do departure arrivals from in 2020, in 2017. See how many different states that are touched there by activity from Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. And then draw my airport helpers in the room. Won't be able to show the, uh, the point, but the top left there, that breaks it out between annual spending, payroll, employment, direct, indirect, that gives you all the juicy data of what the airport impacts. So your airport role, the system plan, the role of the airport, that national business role, goes to show what we're expected to have as an airport, to serve the community, to serve the state of Oklahoma, to serve our national airspace system. This is a little bit of an eye chart test, but as you can see there, here's some of the things that we would expect at a national business airport. Some of the things that we're currently working on, and I know Toby will just mention here in a minute, about making sure that we have these amenities provided, travel in public, to provide business aviation. So there's some accomplishments at the, at once. In FY25, the legislature gave us another round of funding. In, in 22, you heard me mention, we started with $2 million. We started a hangar program. We've never funded hangars in the history as far back as we can find. We were focused on pavement, lights, safety, and the occasional terminal building. Prior to 2021, the legislature gave general appropriate revenues, we had done about eight terminal buildings in our history. Seven until standing, sorry, Charlie. Uh, it wasn't their fault, it was another nation's fault, but one had a couple of years ago, took it out. In the fall of 2022, the legislature came back in the special section and said, what are we going to do with this $1.8 billion of ARPA money? We're going to spread that out to the community. And said, you know, we have some, we have some infrastructure, we want to do that, we know is not eligible for ARPA. So we're gonna, we're gonna bring $2 to $50 million of state money to the table. We're gonna combine that with $1.8 billion of ARPA and get out from the federal recovery. We're gonna put that money into play in state of Oklahoma. Between ARPA and PREP, over $2 to $50 million went into aviation aerospace across our state. A hundred million of that came to our agency for major projects, hangar projects, major economic development projects at four airports across the state. And right now, we are getting, right now, our current annual revenues are about $15 million from the legislature for general appropriations. That doesn't account all of the special one time leases they've been able to provide us over the years. We are doing things that I never would have envisioned in my wildest dreams. And why I tell you that, it's not to, it's not to boast, it's not to, to, to tell you we're great, it's, it's to tell you to take advantage of that. Now is the opportunity, strike while the iron is hot, because I don't know how long this will continue. I hope it does forever and ever, but you just never know in today's life. Some of the FY24 projects that we're already completed, we had three field systems installed, 22 different hangar built, four lighting projects, 30,000, almost six miles of runway rehab, and eight different taxiary aprons replaced. So you've heard me say that, you know, we did eight terminal buildings, eight to nine terminal buildings from the beginning of when we started in terminals in 2021. We have replicated that exact amount today. So we, for about, I'll call it a 14 year time period, eight to nine terminals. We've done eight to nine terminals in about a four to five year time period. Thanks for what the legislature have done. One of those, hopefully, soon to be, we got for Edmond Terminal. Some of the program infrastructure projects that we've been able to tap into over these, over this time period. You guys have a terminal project that's slated, we also have a taxiway project that's slated for, for work. Thanks for some of the monies the legislature can add to your list. The ARPA PREP infrastructure, those one time monies that were provided to us in the, uh, fall of 2022, bought across the state of Oklahoma, hangar programs, those sport projects at Woodward, Ardmore, uh, Will Rogers, and Tulsa International. We have nine special projects that were allocated to us in the 2024 legislative session, FY25. These are those five projects that you can see there. We just, uh, just broke ground in South Carolina, like terminal and hangar, uh, last week. Opina's underway, their hangar project, we're gonna celebrate those next week. Charlie's underway with some of their trailer recovery efforts. One of the things that we really do is, is harking back to our state legislature. They have been extremely supportive of the aviation aerospace industry prior to providing the funding that they gave us. They have provided policy support, tax credits, regulatory restrictions, technical training airspace. You know, but they've done a lot for us, and they're a great supporter, a great contributor to the aviation aerospace industry. Have you heard me say you're a capital of the world? That's what we're best known for, is working on those airplanes that those two ladies are working on right there. We partner with our friends at the Department of Commerce on a program called ACES, which is specifically designed to go out and get those new companies. They host and, uh, attend a lot of conferences and trade shows, aviation conferences and trade shows throughout the year to try and go out and believe those new companies that come to Oklahoma. They also work with our existing businesses here in the state to try and bring those businesses to expand their current operations, figure out what they need to be more successful in expanding their portfolio. The timeline, we have long since tried to figure out a way to get into Ticker Air Force Base. Ticker Air Force Base has about $8 billion a year that they contract out. We keep less than $500 million here in state. I don't know if that contributed, so let me do the quick math. We have long tried to figure out a way to get more of those Ticker dollars into our community. This isn't just the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport, this is the city of Guthrie, city of Edmond. How can we do better with our companies that are supporting this military industrial complex that is Ticker Air Force Base and the Air Force Assemblyman Center? We've been pretty successful. We've had a lot of wins. We've had a lot of private capital investment generated because of those companies having to say, or those existing companies that are expanding in Oklahoma. A lot of things, a lot of great things happening at Ticker, a lot of great things happening within the private sector of aviation aerospace in our state. Even though we had COVID, COVID hurt, it took down our commercial transport, air transportation system significantly. A lot of our private companies had to lay off employees, and we're making our way back. We are doing a good job getting back to pre-COVID levels or exceeding those pre-COVID levels in a lot of respects. I would encourage each one of you to get involved as influential members of your community. We have several events. Our biggest challenge in aviation aerospace in defense is that we are the best kept secret in state of Oklahoma. I grew up here at Border Ridge, Oklahoma, knew about oil and gas, knew about agriculture, knew about being a banker, lawyer, doctor, a mayor, but I didn't know about aviation aerospace. I even had a grandfather who was a pilot, and I still didn't know the depth and breadth of the concerns you have in state of Oklahoma. And so the problem we have, it's the best kept secret in the world, we can't then relay that to our kids to encourage them to choose this as a career. We've done a lot better in the last five to 10 years than we have in the last 30, but we continue to take more, we continue to take more effort on everyone's part. Some of the things that we have, they're related to capital, go out and celebrate a day for aviation aerospace. I know Guthrie Edmond is explaining that in a lot of ways. We have our aviation aerospace education program that Kaden mentioned, we support the, uh, the summer camp. We have 144 high schools around the state of Oklahoma that this year are teaching four-year AOPA curriculum in the classroom. There's another 15 to 20 that are teaching two-year aviation management curriculum. We have a bunch of career techs out, out around the state of Oklahoma that are doing aviation management training, either full load AMP or certificate training. We have universities that have two-year and four-year degrees, engineering, pilot, management, aviation support, logistics, even. I haven't updated this, this is the, uh, the map from last year, because right now, wherever we get, we had one school added, uh, the week before they started school, they wanted to have an AOPA program, and they, they added their program. So I haven't updated this map yet, because it hasn't a really big, big target, but the 2024, 2025 school year, we had 114 schools, this is where they were dotted across the state of Oklahoma. Again, thank you all for having me. I, I hope that between today's conversation and future conversations that we have, that you'll see the importance of aviation aerospace, you'll see what this airport means, you will see what the greater aerospace and defense plus remains in state of Oklahoma. This could mean economic certainty. Aviation aerospace is not tied to a commodity like oil and gas agriculture. Two great industries in the state of Oklahoma, no one of this company. But we've seen what happens in state of Oklahoma when we tie our economy to a commodity-based industry. When times are good, it's great. When times aren't good, it's pretty terrible. I think if aviation aerospace can become our state's number one industry, and we hope that we will by the time we clear out the decade of 2030s, then it will help support the overall economy of the state of Oklahoma. That's why our state leaders, our government, Senator Gutter, our congressional delegation, our two senators, or five congressional members, our entire state legislature, House and Senate, is so all in on aviation aerospace is because they see what this industry can mean in state of Oklahoma, they see that this can take our state to the promised land of economic certainty for many, many years, many decades of time. So I hope I've made you all and convinced you all to become supporters of aviation aerospace if you weren't already. The airport, the scoring of the airport here is extremely important, as you've heard Kaden say many times, it's nickel for a dollar. Sometimes right now it's half a nickel for a dollar. Sometimes it's dime for a dollar. Terminal building is the worst one, it's a dollar for dollar proposition. But at the end of the day, if the two communities that you guys are in can find a way to support this airport for the long haul, and continue on the path that you've been on, and continue to increase your support, I can promise you that this will be a economic driver, not just for pilots and aviation activity, but for aviation businesses. And that's why some of the projects we have coming up are slated like they're slated, to help develop that aviation business opportunity. You heard Kaden mention, one of the biggest struggles that they have is, I don't think, in current, from what you're saying, he and the hangars are owned by the airport. One, one hangar, okay, one hangar is owned by the airport. So that is pretty much unlike any airport in state of Oklahoma. Many airports in the state of Oklahoma, they don't have all their hangars owned by the municipality, but they have half, or maybe a quarter, or maybe a third, or two thirds of the hangars owned by the municipality. Kaden will tell you, getting what's your ground district, 22 cents a square foot. 22 cents a square foot per year compared to 3, 5, $1,000, $1,500 a month rental rate is quite the difference in revenue. And yes, it's going to require significant upfront investment in that effort, but between the revenue it will bring back to the airport, hopefully the jobs that it will bring back to the community, and thereby the form of sales taxes, income taxes, property taxes back into the community, we hope that maybe you'll be able to build some hangars, be able to help the airport become more self-sustaining. We need more hangars, we need that terminal ability to be that beautiful front door to the community of Guthrie Edmond. And so with that, I'll certainly stand for the questions that you may have, and I hope, uh, convince you to be a, uh, an air evangelist, as we like to call it, which is a very good word of, uh, air evangelism.
For reference, I have, I have a lot of those, kind of plus airports in state. Virginia Airport, where do we ring? Because I know we've got, what I understand, the largest number-based aircraft, that is, three and a five.
So, so I would call Guthrie Edmond the largest non-towered airport in state. So in terms of the other aircraft that we have here. So there's, there's nine, 10. 10 airports that have air traffic control tower in state. Our four commercial airports, Will Rogers, OKC International, Tulsa, Stewwater, and Lawton, all have control towers. And there are six generally aviation airports that have control towers as well. Why the Post, Westheimer, Eden, Ardmore, uh, Burns Flat in western Oklahoma, and Tulsa Riverside. You take those airports off the list, you guys are the largest in terms of base aircraft. You're probably right there in terms of the busiest, in competing the busiest title with Durant. Durant's also a non-tire airport, they only have about 80, 90 base aircraft, but they have a flight, they have a university flight program there. So you guys, while you, you take the cake in the base aircraft world, 130 base aircraft of largest generally aviation airport, I would say you're, you're by far top 10 generally aviation airport in state of Oklahoma in terms of your base aircraft and your operations, for sure. And you're the largest base aircraft in a non-tire environment. You know, the, the tide of conversation is something that we don't want to talk about right now, but I wouldn't put it off the radar in that 25, I'm gonna say, maybe 25, that's too far. Maybe that 15 to 20 year range. If we continue to acquire the property, and we continue to build more taxiways, and have more hangars built here, and then we go onto the east side of the airport, since we built on the east side of the airport, in that 15, 20 year timeframe, I think we might be busy enough to need some kind of control there, control field required here. Right now, we're still a, a long ways away from that. Yes, sir.
No, we have some through maybe this technology center and through ours. And we have some incubator programs for small businesses and I think they're tied into ACES. How can we as municipalities work better with the state to kind of grow those things or work together?
So the biggest and best thing that you can do for economic development is getting with the existing aerospace and aviation companies you have in communities. We've got a couple economic development chamber members here. And we say, we're selling, say, you guys are selling your communities. But we're small. You took that, there was a statistic one time that I learned from a previous Commerce Director. You took every single local economic developer, state economic developer, private, you know, economic developer in state of Oklahoma, we still would not get to the resources of the economic development of Houston Texas. So we're already fighting behind from a, from that standpoint. And so the best thing that we can use is our companies. Aviation aerospace is such a small niche field, it's like a family. If we are doing a good job supporting our existing companies, they can go out and sell for us. And they may know, they say, hey, you know what? I know Jim over here, a company ABC, and Jim is 65 and he doesn't have his succession plan. His kids don't want this company. And the community he's in is terrible, they hate it. So, well, we may have a company in Oklahoma that want to acquire that company and move here. Or, let's say for anyone, they want to continue. They're out in Oregon or California or some other state that doesn't love aviation like Oklahoma does. And they want to move to a state that is aviation, pro-aviation friendly to the industry. That sort of repeats itself. I can't say how many times we have companies in Oklahoma that have told their one-day competitor, next-day business partner, hey, Oklahoma is well not the right market for aviation aerospace. If you're looking for a place to relocate, come to Oklahoma. That is the first thing that I would suggest is getting together with your chamber and having an aviation roundtable of what aviation companies you have in Edmond or Guthrie. And just say, hey, look, we want to grow this airport. We want to grow aviation aerospace in our community. What do we need to do to be able to do that? How can we support you in your operations and grow your operations? And how can we expand and grow aviation aerospace? That's the best kept secret out there is those existing aviation aerospace industries in your community and getting with them, figuring out how can they better serve this. They may have workforce. I can't say how many times I've gone to a company and say, I've got this workforce, I'm going to have five years. Well, can you talk to her? Well, no, I'm her doctor. Well, I should know. Oh my gosh, let's go talk. Six months later, they had a ready-made program for you and they were churning out whatever employees that they needed. It's something that simple. We just, we're so, Oklahoma, you think it's so small, so tight-knit, but yet sometimes the right hand doesn't milk the left hand too. And because we are so small in the state of Oklahoma at the state government level, it takes everybody to help us share that message and spread that word. So yeah, if you can get a conversation going with your local aerospace team, get them engaged with the chamber, get them engaged. If they have a workforce challenge, engage with the career tech program. You know, I don't know, setting up, I know Francis Tunnel, which is, they don't have a full-blown AMP program, but they have a lot of certificate programs. They have composites, they have sheet metal, they have avionics, electronics and wiring. And those folks can do four to six months of training in Francis Tunnel and immediately go get hired on Ticker Air Force Base. That's a perfect example. Here at Meridian, you know, to set up a full-blown AMP program is very, very expensive. Go talk to Moore Norman, they just did. They spent, I don't know how many millions of dollars over the last three years standing up their AMP program. It's providing recruits of their labor right now. They have, they're about to graduate the first class or did just graduate the first class, now to graduate the second class. So if they, you know, if you guys did a MRO business right here at the airport, that, you know, it's going to be 20, 30, 40 mechanics. It might make sense for Meridian to start up a AMP or at least an aviation management technology program. And they certainly could if they want to. I mean, you look at Oklahoma City, Warner Cooper in Shawnee, Canadian Valley in El Reno, Moore Norman, Metro Tech, all have full-blown AMP programs. And then Midtown and Francis Tunnel have aviation management certificate programs. Nothing says in Meridian here in Guthrie couldn't have an aviation certificate or a full-blown AMP program because at the end of the day, you can, Ticker could always use more aviation technicians. There will never not be a need for aviation technicians at Ticker Air Force Base. So if east, west and central is doing it, there's no reason why north couldn't do it as well.
Director, I have one more question. As a GA airport, how can we support the little wrong information and relieving traffic? As a girl or airport, we want to continue to hold that top spot. How can we do that in the future?
So I would focus on Will Rogers. I would focus on Wile Coast, Sundance and those kinds of airports. While there's a technical term, and what's wrong with it? There's a technical term called a reliever airport. And there are two airports that are considered official relievers in Max Westheimer and Wile Coast. There is no actual relieving that needs to be done with Will Rogers. They're not at, they're not in a capacity problem like a DFW or a Newark or an LAX or a Chicago air, anything like that. They're not in a true, that reliever program was originally intended to relieve capacity at a commercial airport to get all the GA traffic out. And what I would say is the only GA traffic at Will Rogers right now are those that want to be there because they have hangars there or because it makes sense for them to fly in to top us up in the city where they're at. What I would say is there's a clientele that has been at Wile Coast for years and years, or Sundance for years and years, that actually would love to be at Guthrie, Edmond. But one of the problems you guys have is runway strength. That's one of the challenges, you know? There's a large business jet that would love to be here. And I don't know if it's still in operation since eight, nine years ago. There's a business jet that would love to have been here at Guthrie International Airport because the business was in Edmond, it'd want more simplified to be able to operate in and out of their pilots and lived at Guthrie. A woman passed up in Guthrie, a woman passed up in Edmond, several businesses that came into Guthrie. But it was a strength fault. They had an aircraft that had a dual wheel of 60,000, 70,000 pounds and they weren't, they couldn't come here because the strength was taken with runway. There's also been conversations about runway leak. Strength is solvable. Runway leak, less solvable. It always takes money on the strength side. On the leaking side, it takes money and political courage. I know sometimes that can be difficult in local communities. And I am happy to talk off on any about that. But that's where I would focus my attention is if you could build hangars today and, you know, charge 15% less than what Wile Coast or Sundance is charging, there are people that are probably living in Edmond, living in Guthrie that are basing their airplane in Wile Coast or in Sundance or even in Chandler or, you know, eastern Oklahoma City. I can't say how many times I've had people complaining in Choctaw about when they were building an airport on the west eastern side of the community and you say, well, that's not going to happen through that state of Air Force Base. So at the end of the day, I would focus on trying to bring the traffic that is from Wile Coast, Sundance, eastern Oklahoma City, that might be in Chandler or Shawnee or something like that, bring them to Guthrie by spurring on your own development here. Some of that's going to require hangars, some of that's going to require more leaning, some of that, if you want the big iron, would require a stronger runway taxiway iron. So anyway, all food to think about in the long term. Will Rogers, you're probably not going to steal anything from Will Rogers, but he can certainly steal some stuff from Wile Coast or Sundance or Shawnee or eastern Oklahoma City that may be based at Westheimer or something like that.
Director, that's kind of what we're seeing at the airport is the majority of the businesses and traffic that are moving are coming from Sundance, Wile Coast. So I think to speak to Eddie's question, just how do we, what amenities can we provide that attracts that GA from Wile to just keep the business rolling in Guthrie Edmond?
Well, so, yeah, I mean, hangars is basically, the hangar, hangars is the big driver. You guys have built hangars. You know, Wile Coast and Sundance are both full. They're full up. They built new hangars, are building new hangars, private hangars and public hangars. But they're full. And that's the one thing that we have a shortage of is hangars. I mean, I can't tell you how many people post in social media on aviation channels, hey, do you have a hangar? Hey, do you have a hangar? You know, I know there are people that are basing El Reno, live in Oklahoma City. There are people that are based in Shawnee or Seminole, live in Oklahoma City. There are people basing Persell, live in Oklahoma City. Because there's no hangars at Westheimer or Wile Coast or Sundance. Now, some of that may be price, candidly, aviation or cheap bunch. Don't get me, don't get me to play about that. If we can save a buck, we'll save a buck and we'll travel 20 extra miles to save that buck. We will save a buck in rent to go spend that buck flying the airplane. But not all of that is a tune of price. A lot of that's just because there's no, no hangars. We've been building a lot of hangars, but those hangars haven't been here in metro area. They've been in El Reno, they've been in Shawnee, they've been in Seminole, they've been in Westheimer, Goldfield. And any hangars that can be built, even around a 45-minute drive of a downtown Tulsa or downtown Oklahoma City, can build up pretty hard way.
So I suppose we paint the runways orange and then try to steal the still water.
Well, so orange is not a good color in aviation for runway. Typically, runways are white. No offense, I am Boomer Center, I am a Boomer, as Caden alluded to. So yeah, white and yellow.
That was a serious question. Is still water kind of in that group of color that is sort of proximity to it?
So you see, yeah, still water, I know they have waiting lists. You know, still water probably isn't going to build any new hangars for some time. They're focused, all of their capital on commercial service. So yeah, if you can steal some from still water. What is this? What's the traffic system computer? Four or five minutes? Roughly. Yeah. So yeah, there's nothing to say you wouldn't be able to get someone from still water to move down here. They, you know, that's one of those things that in the general aviation crew, there are people that like being at tired airports and there are people that hate being at tired airports. And somebody may depart still water because they hate being at tired commercial airport. There's also more security requirements to be at a commercial airport than at a general aviation airport. So you could probably attract a few of those folks that are fed up with or don't like dealing with the security and all the tower issues at still water. So, yeah. I think you could certainly bring a few. I think that the most, most of the folks that you're going to be attracting, if you, if you went and built five or six hangars tomorrow, most of those folks are going to come from Oklahoma City. They're going to come, they're either going to be a new entr into the field or they've all been based at Wile Coast, Sundance, Shawnee, Chandler. If nothing else, I appreciate you guys having me today. Thank you, Director. All right, we will move on to item number five. Presentation and discussion of capital and private projects and funding options at the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport.
Let me introduce Toby Baker as well. Thank you, Director, for coming today. Our next speaker is an Oklahoma aviation lead and partner in Park Hill, an engineering consultancy firm that provides services for our airport. Mr. Baker has a civil engineering degree from OSU. He's a pilot, holds a commercial pilot certificate for single and multi-engine aircraft. Toby is also a certified flight trainer. The best part about Toby is he actually bases his aircraft out of our airport. And so any day when he just wants to take off work and go fly his plane, he'll still get hammered with questions from him as he's kind of doing the game. So appreciate him being here and welcome, Toby.
One additional thing, I actually grew up in and graduated from Edmond San Fraser High School and my parents still live there today. That's what I grew up in. And for the past 18 years, my wife and I have lived just east of Guthrie and rural Logan County. So it's very gratifying for me to get to work on an airport that serves two communities that are very close to personal ties. So that's, that's wonderful. The first project that we wanted to talk about today is the one that is ongoing right now. I'll see when we go out to the airport. And that is to realign the south portion of our parallel taxiway and install new LED lights in the entire parallel taxiway system. What kind of sensitivity this project is over time, the FAA standards for taxiways for runway separation have changed. And so we've essentially been non-standard at our airport for 20-plus years. And for those of you that are familiar or look at the airport, the north portion of the parallel taxiway is at the correct space in front of runway. I'm not just telling them back in 2006. So now we're essentially finishing what was started all the way back in 2006. Caden spoke about the cost of the project earlier, but the FAA is providing 90% of the funding. The state is providing 5% of funding and then each community is providing 2.5%. The next project that we start here within the next 30 days is to install over 8,000 feet of fencing on the east side of the airport. The purpose of this is essentially for deer exclusion. The past three years, we have had three deer strikes on runway. That is obviously unacceptable for safety standards. And so we're doing something a little bit creative on this. The cost of chain link fencing has continued to rise just out of sight. And so actually, Director already asked our firm a few months back to develop a state standard specification for fencing at our general aviation airports that will be more cost-effective than traditional chain link fence. So we're trying to think outside the box on that. And rather than thinking about, well, what type of fence is the best to eat deer out? We looked at what are people using to keep deer in? And so we're actually using a high tensile net wire fencing product that many commercial hunting ranches use to keep deer in, to keep deer off of the airport. So this will be one of the first airports in the state that has this type of fencing. It's very exciting. The Congress changed the federal program a little bit this year such that FAA is providing 95% of funding for this project so that each community again decides 2.5%. The next project that we are beginning to design on, we actually, Park Hill completed a schematic design for this project almost three years ago. There was a competitive program at FAA to provide funding for terminal buildings. And the city leadership at the time thought if we could go ahead and get a schematic design together and put that in our application package to try to compete with that funding, that would give us a better chance than other airports. While we were successfully getting that particular pot of money, we were ultimately successful in getting some congression-directed spending for both a new terminal building and a portion of the new terminal paper pages that we associate with it. So the new building will be approximately 7,000 square feet, about 24-hour access for pilots, to a pilot's lounge. The goal was to also include a restaurant space, which is something that is fairly unique to our airport. There's another tremendous number on that that's very popular amongst the flying public. Pilots like myself will look for an excuse to fly to an airport that has a restaurant just for the sake of it. And then the other goal that the city has had is to create an area where the public can come. The corporate did have the airport for different events, classroom space to make a facility that is attractive to those that come here that might not have otherwise. So this is just, this is a floor plan that was developed in the schematic design. We will continue to refine this as we move into the next step of design. And you can see the restaurant space there will have a space for the airport manager, the airport director, rather, and then also the FBO staff. A large conference area, 24-hour accessible a lot of times, as I mentioned. Of course, a traditional passenger way here. Then to talk about a few of the things that we have coming up. I say long-term, some of them are actually still very, fairly near-term. We have a lot of land on the west side of the airport that is currently prime real estate for development of additional hangars. As I mentioned previously, that is one of the needs that we would like to see that in order to generate additional revenue for the airport. One of the challenges in our current hangar development area is we don't have any sort of stormwater retention for that area. And any additional development is going to significantly impact existing stormwater runoff issues that we have that leave the airport on the west side. It's a plague that happens on vision. So the prerequisite to doing any additional expansion on that west development area is to create some terminal retention. So that is one of the short-term goals. Another project that Director already mentioned is construction of new taxi lanes on some newly acquired property. We're currently in the middle of land acquisition on southwest side of the airport. That will give us additional space for taxi lanes and ultimately hangar development. us some additional space for taxi lanes and ultimately hangar development. Uh, and then once that taxi lane is constructed, the, the goal will be to construct some city-owned hangars. Uh, as, as Director already said, Kevin mentioned earlier, we currently only have one hangar on the entire airport that is owned by the city. Uh, the rest of those are just on a ground lease where we receive a few sets per foot of the year. Uh, so the goal here, we need to create some larger hangars that would be used by business aviation, potentially even have a business in the hangar, uh, for maintenance overall, et cetera. Uh, that would, that would generate some real revenue for the city by, by those. Uh, we, we talked a little bit about paying strength earlier, that is one of the challenges that for, for many, many years, in especially when we are recording, there's always kind of a desire, I think, to be bringing larger aircraft in, to extend the runway. And really what would be a prerequisite for that is, is currently our, our concrete payment is only six inches thick. And that will only accommodate up to kind of a mid-sized business jet. A lot of the larger business jets, Gulfstream, et cetera, that we see at bigger airports like Wile Coast, they, they can operate at Guthrie, um, not solely because of the runway length issue, but our runway taxiway, uh, very expensive. So, uh, this will probably be, be set a project that would take some congressional direct spending, just the sheer size of it, because we would want to strengthen the runway, all the connector taxiways, parallel taxiway, and then the, the terminal parking area. Uh, so that would certainly be a large hole to find, but we've seen at other airports, as Director already shared, there has been that level of funding allocated at other airports in our state through, through Congress. So that's something that in the back of our mind, we want to continue to be mindful of. Uh, once we complete the land acquisition on the southwest side, we then will do a second round of, of further fencing so that we can effectively have the entire airport fenced in. Uh, we, we stopped this first phase kind of as we rounded south into the airport simply because didn't make sense to construct fences. Current property line, the middle of the land acquisition project, we'll have to take that down and relocate it here. So that, that's a little bit lower down on our CIP, which is something that still be a priority so that we can completely control the movement of the air across the crosshair. And then finally, um, once we are able to acquire the land on the southwest side, we discussed the construction of a second entrance to the airport, uh, that's going to make, just from a terrain standpoint, a fairly large creek that came along the west side to, to have particular access to the next, uh, hangar developing area. It's logical to have a second entrance off of a perimeter. Uh, so that's the last thing that we have to work on. So that would certainly stand for reading questions about either the current construction project or even ETV now.
So question, I don't know, all these things. Uh, the relevant lending and strengthening, I was curious, roughly how much does that kind of thing cost for this?
So, yeah.
Ten to million.
The, the quick.
Yes, yes.
First, first rule of engineering is you already publiced that.
I had to.
Second rule of engineering is when the council says, how much is it going to cost? The answer is somewhere between one million and ten bags of money. Now, in, in all seriousness, uh, we, we were looking at somewhat of a robust number of around twenty-five million. It, it will be picture. Uh, and five years ago, I think we would have set out of sight, but we've seen the congressional allocation with, with different ones. Like Westheimer, Sherman, it's, it's not completely off the table either because of the congressional direction.
The, the other thing that's challenging for your strengthening is you also have to widen at the same time. So, like, we were doing a strengthening congressional advice, uh, and Congress passed the budget, has allocated thirteen million dollars for strengthening at their airport, but they're already widened up. They don't have to widen, but to jump up to the next category of airport, you guys have some, some standards that you're going to have to fix that add to the, more than just strengthening the project.
We're, we're sitting in a tight one now, so in order to justify the next step of aircraft we would need, of course, all the runway lights and that there's several dominoes that fall from each.
Any more questions for Mr. Baker or anybody?
How complicated is our CIP, Toby?
Uh, there is a graphic in the back there. We should have put that up there. But it is a, it is very, it is very interesting. You're a little bit unique because of the way the funding, um, was presented. But I would say it's, it's a good problem to have. We have so many different flavors of money that are being allocated towards us that, um, it, it makes it a little bit challenging to reflect that, you know, CIP, but it's, it's a little bit unique, but maybe.
I, I can tell you that each year we would set down with Brady and Kevin, what's this going to cost each city? Well, the answer is a bunch. Uh, we, we think it's going to be this, but this is really an optic, see the amount, it's probably a little bit less, will be more. But you see those documents, ask Toby every year, help me understand why we don't know what this costs. And, and the shortage here is all of the different planning mechanisms and sources.
Yeah, it's a moving target. And the construction is a bit dry now, or, or variable. I mean, the, the construction is involved in a fair season, certainly not moving now. Um, so we're, we're, we're trying to balance, make conservative and making sure that we project high enough, uh, that so that, so happy camp point. So, uh, but at, at the same time, uh, you know, we don't want to overestimate grossly. So there is a delicious, it's a piece. Uh, so there's a healthy tension there. And, and then the way the different municipalities, fiscal years don't line up with FAA's, built in the states, that always causes some challenges. Inevitably, we begin a project in one fiscal year when we haven't yet received a grant because our grants are based on this. So, so we have to design the project, did it out to bid, and then turn in that application. So the cities are essentially fronting all of the designing costs in one fiscal year, only to be reimbursed ninety or ninety-five percent of those designing costs in the next fiscal year. So if we're, where we draw the line and that cash flow of the process, it's.
Uh, no, sir, no, thank you. Yes, I'm happy to do that. So in all this conversation, you've talked about, talked about a lot of different things. One of the things that I haven't heard mentioned is if you expand this facility, one of the things you want to do is continue to make it an all-weather usable airport. And right now, I'd say that that's probably one of our limitations, is the all-weather capability. If you have a longer runway, if you have a stronger runway, oh, that's fine. But the business jets aren't going to come in here if you got a underfoot ceiling and a four mile visibility because they can't navigate too well. So can you speak to, I know yesterday's ground-based navigational facilities is one thing, and often those are very expensive if you get an instrument landing system. But what about today's technology? You know, we've got advances in, in GPS, in all the different kinds of ways of navigating and getting around airspace and in the airports. Are you seeing anything? What would we have to plan? I know the, the amount of space needed to put in an instrument landing system is, that's more land acquisition. So.
Well, I haven't, I haven't either, but I, I tend to just probably tend, I know we have a question to answer. Here you go. With one of the council members like that, Walter. I'll do it better if you guys agree.
Sure. Uh, I'll copy and paste that.
Thank you. So, Walter. First off, um, we are certainly not seeing FAA getting in the business of installing new ground-based navigational systems at long-term airports. Um, and we're, we're starting to come home, I think, they can come out and just flatten as like I said, we are not putting any ILs. If, if we had one somewhere, even with it, for example, back in twenty-fourteen, we extended our runway twenty-four hundred feet and that necessitated relocating components of the ILs. FAA is agreeable to doing that. Mind you, city got the favor of a tremendous amount of, of their budget. Um, but where we have looked at doing that, Marlesville, for example, Marlesville has a localizer, but they don't have a light slope that is necessary to create a, a full instrument landing system. And FAA has flat out said, we don't want another ground base in that way, but we have to. I would say that even now in the business jet community, the ability to fly vertically guided GPS approaches, that is not there. It's not in all of commercial aircraft, but most, um, even semi-modern business aircraft are, are able to fly vertically guided GPS approaches. And breaking from our own pain shouldn't do this. So we have one mile visibility vault on both ends of the runway. I think we're down to three hundred feet, two fifty, two fifty. So the only improvement that we can get would be to take that two fifty minimum descent height. So, okay, for the non-pilots in the room, when, when you're flying in clouds, FAA has a prescribed minimum altitude that you can descend to, but before you have to be able to visually see them. And there are different things that can help us improve, uh, how low the aircraft can go before they see them. If you get to that altitude and don't see their runway, then they have to execute what's called a missed approach and go to school somewhere. So Wile Coast will, will show somewhere where the weather's better, where they have a lower instrument approach. But we're ten fifty feet of the lowest possible, uh, decision height. And so the only thing that we can potentially do is if we can find, um, what our controlling obstacles are, if there's something that could be removed, we might be able to get that a little bit lower. But on the visibility side, the only way we're ever going to get below three quarters of my visibility is to have a full mountain. So on, on the north end of the airport right now, those of you that have been to Walmart tonight, you may see some flashing strobe lights kind of running in line. It's called an omnidirectional approach light system. It is a good tool and resource for pilots to help them find the runway for pilots, but it actually doesn't do anything to lower FAA's, uh, visibility. So we're talking about how, how foggy essentially can the pilots feel being illegally limited. So, uh, I would say, well, we're probably pretty close to where we're ever going to be with, without adding an mauser. Uh, I, simply because a mauser requires forty-four hundred feet of space on the only end of the runway. I think that's going to be very challenging on the south end simply because residences that are there. Um, on the north end, we, we already have the tallest mauser, or excuse me, OLS system in the state. Some of those approach lights are on seventy foot towers here. Um, so it would be incredibly costly to look, replacing the OLS with an mauser to, to try to. But I think we're probably, probably just where we're ever going to get about significantly additional investment. You know, and on a true ILs, and one, we, we don't have, we, we don't have the width in the airport to put, uh, lights up in. And that doesn't mean we're going to be far as to track them. The light's so critical, area, the ground that's equipped is just substantially slower. If we were not to relocate industrial road again, it'd just open over the, the juices. Director, have you had anything additional on that that I overlook?
No, I mean, it's, you, you're, you're within ten percent of the best that an airport's going to have. So if you look at a, you look at a Duran that doesn't have an ILs, that has GPS approaches that are comparable like you guys have, they, they get G5s, G, you know, they get level, level five thousandths all the time. So you're, you're within ten percent of the best non-ILS airports in the state. To me, as Toby mentioned, the juices are really worth its weight from a, what, what it would take to get better. Uh, one thing I would say is you have OLS on the north end, why you don't have three quarters mile of that right now is something that you investigate.
What, what are, you're telling me?
What, what's the controlling structure there? Uh, because, I mean, you have an approach light system, it should discount you a quarter mile, um, on that side. There must be something out there in trees or, I doubt it's terrain, but something's controlling the, the being able to go down to two hundred, three quarter mile. Uh, so that's, again, we can do that without significant investment potentially.
This is an obstruction rule.
Yeah, obstruction of rules kind of process, uh, sort of on terrain or, or ability.
Any other questions we'd like to hear?
Yeah. Thank you for answering my questions. Certainly, certainly.
Those were a lot.
Do what I can. Any more questions?
I would, I would love to, I'm an aerospace engineer, I'd love to work out of that discussion a little more. But, um, I was going to ask, I think maybe answer it with that, but, and I hope we can see where these things are being, and what we've got there. But long-term, long-term, it sounds like maybe the vision for this airport is not to make it a separate airport, or make it bigger, but kind of stay in the niche we're in, and not that original, uh, footprint that we have-ish. Is that right, technically? Is that, I mean, you don't have a.
I mean, if, if I were, if I were to be a true mechanic with you, there's, there's very little chance to ever go over. Uh, you're, you're going to have to, you're going to have to close the roadway to the south of the airport and scoop up fifteen to twenty homes if you're willing to go over. Uh, and then I say, look, you can maybe get, you know, a couple hundred feet either way. If you want to go to six thousand, sixty-five or seven thousand feet, there's, there's no chance of going down here. Uh, so what you need to be is the best, you know, five thousand, fifty, five hundred foot runway you can be, serve the traffic that you can serve. The nice thing about MRO activities, if you could, you know, we, if you could get a MRO business in here, you could, in theory, bring G5 MRO actions here, strengthen your runway a little bit. Because when you bring an aircraft in for MRO, it's not full capacity weight. It's, it's been brought in light, it's taken off light. So, you know, that's where, you know, I always encourage people like, look, look at what your capabilities are. Go after something that's within your capability set. And if your capability set is five thousand, three five hundred foot runway, you, you could be a very populous-based aircraft airport in business aviation, aircraft is just the worst. And so that's what I would focus, focus your attention on is trying to get as much land around the airport as you can. Land's never going to go, land's not going away, it's never going to cheaper. Uh, so we're working on that right now with a couple acquisitions. Get that developable land around the airport and do what you can to grow the airport community with what you have. Versus service, throw that idea away. Uh, you know, seven thousand foot runway, throw that idea away. Just go, go focus your attention on things that are actually achievable as opposed to what I call apply the sky.
We have quite a few callers that we, uh, that will call up and ask them their American Airlines flight is part of the, or the, or the thing you do with their luggage for tonight. Um, and that's, that's one of the fun aspects of general aviation airport. A lot of, a lot of misunderstandings.
Any more questions for Mr. Baker that I would like to ask? No?
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you. Uh, earlier in the introductions, I, I called our city clerk the court clerk, so I'd like to correct that. Um, it's my first joint session. I didn't want to be nervous and, and embarrass myself. Well, that certainly happens. So, uh, I did want to say, uh, so I'm a movie producer. And, uh, before that, I was in the video production. I got pulled into that again, um, with a company that sells private jets. And I went to Missouri for the first production meeting and shoot. And, but they're all pilots, of course, you know, surprise. And I was so honored. And I took just a lot of pride in the fact that when I, they found out I was from Guthrie, uh, all of them, they just said, oh my God. They were all excited because apparently it's unanimous in the aviation fraternity, if you'll call it, that out of Oklahoma, I guess Missouri, Arkansas, Kansas, Guthrie, Alabama, that's the nicest airport. And I, I loved hearing that. It made me feel good for the, the entire reading, the entire, the entire production. So I want to thank everybody in this room for making that the, um, standard for everybody and, uh, letting that be something known. So did, did you guys know that they thought of it like that? I guess we're the, the Harvard of airports from the municipalities, I guess. It felt really good hearing that, so I appreciate it. Um, well, I, I did all the work. Do you want to adjourn?
Are we ready to adjourn?
Yeah. Are we any more, we're a business or?
We were ready to adjourn, everything we have, that is the airport next.
Okay. But we do need to adjourn, Darren?
Yes, yes.
Okay. On both sides again?
Yes.
Okay, we can do it.
You have a question.
Yeah, we are adjourned. Okay. We are adjourned.